Okay, everyone can hear us. Mark, Carla, Greg, everyone in. That's joined in. I've got six o'clock here, so let me get this set here just for clock purposes. I've got six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and begin the June ninth Guardian City Community College Board of Trustees. Monthly meeting to order. We don't need to necessarily roll call since we've got all of our trustees here. But I'll move on to comments from myself. A few things. As end of the year rolls around, of course, we look at GPAs and. I know Ryan and I talked about it this morning, but six total teams. Should be congratulatory. The teams above three point oh. For the entire or academics include fall and spring semesters, but individual students we had. About one hundred and fifty above three point oh with with thirty of those being four point oh, which hats off to them, obviously. As a student athlete, there's a lot of demand being an athlete and falling in line, making sure that you're still doing great in school. So hats off to them. Other note was that if you guys had seen in your memos. The the commercial that was aired by or that was produced by Garden City Community College, the local TV schools, college universities about. I think it was kind of a general, general ad, but from here you can go anywhere and and obviously well done. But it was through Cox Media just won the national bronze tele award, obviously nationally local recognized, but. Even even the fire science, I was kind of surprised the fire science didn't have the fire science one was pretty neat, but hats off to everyone that worked on that. Tremendous achievement by all means. Couple other things I know. Myself and Ryan and a couple other individuals got together with Mike Filsoff. Hopefully you guys can be looking for that pretty soon. He's. He's creating a video. He's been putting off different videos, but he's creating a video over the 2016 National Championship Football Team. And and not just the team, but kind of highlights moving up into that and all that. I he's he's interviewing all kinds of the players and anybody that's involved and kind of remembering it. It was it was a good session. I think it was, you know, it's kind of fun to remember all that and the excitement, of course, being down there was just. It was really, really awesome. So hopefully that will be coming out pretty soon. He'll he'll shoot that out and and we'll have that displayed around social media. And then probably the only other thing is is a couple agenda items. Remember we have a budget retreat coming up. Is that right? June twenty fifth. That's that Thursday where we get kind of an idea of where our budget's at. I'm sure Ryan can touch base a little bit more on that. And then our next monthly meeting is going to be pushed back, remember to June, July twenty first. That's a week later, just because it gives administration. Proper amount of time to get the budget and all the details gathered. And then Ryan and I were talking and and we'll discuss more as as. We're still figuring out the transitioning of coming back to school and all that stuff, but. Probably looking at hopefully maybe looking at back to face to face meetings here. Board meetings, maybe in August when school starts up again and everything else, but for. Maybe for the next month or something, still gonna be one of those kind of keep because we're transitioning at this college, but as more comes about, but I think this has been. Working at the best we can, but we'll keep everyone apprised whether that goes there, but. Like I said, more or less agenda items, make sure everyone knows that when the meetings are and everything. And if you have any problems scheduling conflicts, please just. Let myself or Ryan or Amy know and and we'll try to make it work for everyone. Other than that, I don't have anything else that I wish to kind of announce, but it's been a. Another interesting month, of course, and moving on and finding out more stuff, so. Introduction to new employees, we're not doing any of that. So we'll go ahead and go into the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions?
I'd like to have item two E.
You said two B?
E.
Two E. Oh, okay, okay, two E. Sure.
Have some discussion about.
Sure. Anyone else? Anything would like to be removed? Just further discussion?
F. I just want to find out a little more.
Okay, sure. Yep, yep. So anybody else? Comments, concerns, nothing? I would say then can we get a motion to approve consent agenda A through D as presented? Pulling E and F for further discussion.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda items A through D for approval. And hold on E and F for further discussion. Beth.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Marilyn's second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Do we want to do a roll call just with people on? Okay, we'll do a roll call. This is Blake. Aye.
Chanda, aye. Marilyn, aye. Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
Okay, perfect. So we'll go into just down the line, the training room. Leonard?
I wanted to find out a little bit more. We have two bids, as I understand. One is, I got it. Here, I'm looking at the right.
I think we're around page thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty two.
Thirty one is a handwritten copy.
Thirty one is a super circuit.
That's what I thought we were.
Well, super circuit was D. Are you more?
I was. I thought that was part of the training room.
Now, if that's a separate item you want to discuss?
Yes.
Okay, can we make an amendment to pull item D?
I approve on my motion previously that we also. Hold on this and discuss number D, the super circuit.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Okay, so super circuit. Leonard?
I have some questions. We have two bids, one's for one hundred and twenty four thousand, one's for sixty four thousand, it's like. And we're recommending we go with one hundred and twenty four thousand, which is twice the amount of the other bid. And I understand that the logic there is that the equipment in in the one hundred and twenty four thousand bid or. Is supposedly superior, but I'd like to know a little bit more about that. That's twice.
Twice the cost. This super circuit, if you see there, Leonard, there's on the super circuit on page thirty one, this might answer your question. Company one and company two, one was one forty.
Yes.
And company two was one twenty four. That's for just the super circuit.
I've gotten the training room in here.
Yeah.
And I shouldn't have.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's just forget I said.
Okay. Does that answer? So we went with the lowest bid on the super circuit.
Forgot that.
And then and then we had no other bids on the training room.
Actually, we're taking the higher bid on super circuits.
Oh, we are. Okay, okay. And because.
We both were taking that there one because the higher bid also includes a three year.
Right, that's right.
Three year warranty will come out twelve times within the three years of getting service.
Well, there's not a much difference there to make to me to make. The reason to go with the lesser one when you're getting a little, you're paying a little more for something better.
Well, it's gonna last.
Service.
The service amendments, if anybody deals with the equipment, the value of that can be, I mean, those things aren't necessarily, I mean, they have to be properly. They should be properly maintained and taken care of and having somebody dedicated that can come out, I think, I think it's a well worth investment for the little bit of difference in price, so.
Well, as much use as that gets, and I know how long that equipment's been there, I'm sure it's getting worn pretty bad. So it's timed up, Dave.
With the intent of opening it up there then to also include gold cards. Residents of county as well as just all students and employees, it'll it'll get high use.
Yeah.
Gee, I thought that was really neat that you were opening it up since I'm a golden oldie.
I guess I would just question, is there, who's gonna be, is there gonna be a monitor in there to monitor the golden oldies?
There always is.
So we still have, yeah, we still have a staff member who will be dedicated to covering that space of. That staff member and the rest of the court assistant coaches, we have.
And then I guess my question. That gets brought up, and Derek signed off on this purchase or this request, but has the athletic team taken a look at the equipment? Are they satisfied with that?
Yeah, included in the RFP processor.
Thank you.
This is David, and my my question is, does it meet the bid? I mean, we don't get to see the bid itself, so we can evaluate whether. Their product meets it.
And the seed specifications that we wrote into there as far as the specific types of equipment that we're looking for, but then also ask for. Included as far as warranty, if there's any warranty with it, then also including if there's any type of. Pricing there on being able to, they had available for. Pricing on that there. As far as the specifications that we wrote into the RFP, it does mean they see what it is that we wrote into that there based on our criteria.
Okay, just want to know, since I used to write bids all the time, I'd like to know what's in the bid to make sure everything's met.
I I had a question on, is it unusual for that many to decline the bid?
Yes.
If they cannot meet the specifications, I mean, there were several alternate majors that were put into place there as far as being able to have these. Several of them, they're just were able to meet specifications.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Supplements or questions? No, all good questions, of course. And then I suppose we'll move on to illusion recruiting software item F. Do you have any questions over the training room?
Over what?
The training.
On the training room.
You knew the training room, which is kind of that.
I was putting super circuit and training room together, which are basically the same.
Sure.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Some of those athletes do go in and use super circuit too, though, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, super circuit will will kind of cover side with also being workout facility as well as a facility. For rehabilitation and things of that nature as well, so it'll serve multiple purposes.
Do we still have the training room equipment in the old wrestling room?
That's actually been converted to a secondary weight room now.
So there is weight room.
There's weight, there's weight equipment in there.
That's why the most of the students are directed there instead of the other ones.
Yeah, but then we also have some of our our smaller teams and. We have several teams that utilize that there as a weight room there as well. So. What we're running into is when we only had one primary weight room, it was hard to be able to schedule the teams through that one way room in a timely manner. So when we opened up that secondary weight room. Freed up a lot of our time there for strength and conditioning coach to be able to utilize both weight rooms.
So the main weight room is pretty much reserved for that football, baseball.
Baseball primarily.
Yeah.
It's open to anybody, but those are the primary two.
Yeah, I understand.
Mission? What's?
We got a lot of. I want I want the layman's version of how this benefits our students, how this affects staffing, how that benefits them. Does it change any of our staff requirements as far as if that streamlines those processes? Yeah, the layman's version of what illusion is gonna do.
Absolutely. No, I mean, at the very, at the very minimum, what it's doing is taking us from a manual processing of admissions applications. And being able to put into a processor where they're actually feeding directly into illusion into data tell, which is our student information system. So right now, when a student fills out an admissions application, they fill it out online. It's a PDF form that comes back into our office. But then it has to be manually entered into data tell. What this application will allow us to do there is several things there, but at the very minimum. Being able to streamline our our entry of the application into data tell in more timely fashion. Eliminate some of the the manual processing that we have right now. And then the other, the other aspects of that there is that it also serves as a communication tool. So once we have that information entered into data tell. It allows us to be able to enhance communication by email, be able to have conversations through social media, text messaging with students. So we can have a lot more timely interaction with students to say, we received your application, we processed your application, congratulations. It just, it helps us in a lot more of the communication piece that we that we have right now that's very outdated. Gets us, gets us into a processor where we're more formalized with our communication with students. Get it out to them more timely, get them out in a manner where the students are actually at, students aren't checking email. You know, it's it's social media, even text messages is a little bit difficult for students there as well. So. What we're able to do is interaction platforms where students are engaged.
So this would just be like directly from our website that they would access this, not a separate app or something.
Yeah. Yeah, what it, what it does, I mean, there will be a separate app there. So once they are admitted. Part of the admissions application process is that they will receive a letter saying you're admitted. But then they can also be able to go back here and download it. It tracks, you know, financially, the applications that have achieved that you have scholarship applications do. So. It does enhance, there is a path that's that's part of it there that will be available to students so they can, they can start tracking. Where they're at in admissions process.
And what benefit do you see this having on the the staff and the hours that they, I mean. What's the, what's the benefit to them? How's that gonna look?
Well, I think it'll really twofold there that that I foresee it there. One, I think that it'll help, it'll enhance. Our turnaround time there as far as having that interaction with students. So instead of having to wait for applications to be processed when. Admissions officers may be out on the road recruiting, now it's much more instantaneous. They're getting that information fed. We can get communication going at more time and manner. I think the other side that we perceive benefits on there. Is that it'll allow our admissions folks to be able to focus much more actively on recruitment versus having to come back to the office after being on the road all week. Input the applications, input the information that they have in the data. So it allows them to be able to work a little bit smarter and. Help you to get information out in a more instantaneous fashion.
Will this work at all with like endowment scholarships that they can see? Any awards that they've gotten as far as endowment board scholarships, or is that?
Yeah, so.
One step too far.
No, I mean, so there's, there's components of it there to where we will be able to go out there and they can see what's been offered. They'll be able to, they won't necessarily be able to accept, or not to that point, they're maybe put on, but they can see what's been offered, they can see their bill. So they're able to see, you know, once a scholarship's been applied, they can see that on their student bill. So it's it's really just capturing a lot more information for students and making it available through this app. So that they're able to track things in a more digital fashion, which is part of the expectation I have.
Yeah. Okay.
What? What's, is this kind of norm going, I mean, through the other community colleges in Kansas or universities? Is this what you're seeing? I mean, it's, are we, are we ahead of the game or are we behind the game in in something like this? I mean. Are there's utilizing it or are we, like you said, I I kind of look at, you know, your foresight of doing the contract with Cengage, you know, with the books online and stuff. Are we kind of in the forefront of this or or where where has it been?
Yeah, I mean, I would say. If you're comparing community college wise, I would say we're kind of in the middle of that.
Okay.
There's been community colleges that have, that have had this type of capabilities for for several years. There's community colleges that are kind of at the point where they are already actively looking at this and they're still in the manual process. Most are four year schools have integrated this technology already. But community college wise there, we're not behind, we're not behind the pack there, but we're not as.
We're not the guinea pig, but we're not the last.
Which is kind of good, too. You don't always want to be the guinea pig and 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 so. You don't always want to be the guinea pig and, and, and so if it's been around and things like that, so they've worked out glitches and kinks.
Well, the neat thing is, and speaking from experience and the old entering the application, it might get, you know, by the time it went from two or three different offices for different things, you got lost. And the thing that I've appreciated or from the time I worked here that we went with this software company or with this hardware software, whatever you want to call it, the whole thing is that they are on the cutting edge and they're always looking out for their clients. So I, I can remember when an application for scholarship would come in and, well, where is it? Did it end up in the endowment office and they don't, you know, they don't award them at all? Did it end up someplace else in admissions as opposed to the scholarship committee and financially? It, I, as I read through the thing, I thought, yep, they're watching out for us.
Yeah, no, I, I think it streamlines, again, it streamlines a lot of processes. The other, the other feature that, you know, that I'm excited about there is that, you know, again, it'll, it'll streamline a lot of our work that we have with prospective students. So when we have a student who comes here and says and expresses interest in going to the college, there's a separate prospect form that they can fill out and says, hey, I'm interested in pre-med, I'm interested in band, I'm interested in softball. So each of those interest areas, when they fill that out, will automatically be directed to the softball coach, to the pre-med advisors, to your band instructors. So instead of having to wait for missions to come back and say, we ran across a student on the road, here's their information. Immediately, once a student fills out that prospect form there, then we have that information being directed and helping in that recruitment process.
So this is not a new company? It meets with data tell?
This is still through illusion. This is just an add-on feature of, of data tell.
Data tell's through illusion? Okay, so they talk to each other?
Yes.
I know how those upgrades go sometimes and.
It's their product. Yeah, it's their product and one that they support.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? No? Well, with that, answering the questions on items E and F, I would ask that we get a motion.
And D also.
Oh, D, sorry, D F. I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
This is Marilyn. I make a motion that we approve items D, E, and F as presented.
This is David. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, this is Blake. Aye.
Shannon, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
Okay, very good. Moving on to item three, confirmation of monitoring reports. We've got just a few of them, kind of straightforward, basic. Page sixty-four, asset protection number five. I'll read it here just for everyone's sake. The president shall not make any purchase A of over twenty thousand without compensation bid, competitive bids and do consideration regarding cost, quality and service and B of over fifty thousand. It's CO's interpretation there and the data that is directly behind it. We got checks and balances and, and pretty straightforward with that. Does anybody have any comments to that or feel unsatisfied by that executive limitation?
I think it's still reasonable, don't you? Yeah, I don't know how clear it can get.
I, that's right. I mean, it's pretty straightforward and I think, well, and sometimes if we, I think in the past, we've always identified is the number more or less. Do we need to, do we need to move the number up or down as, as projects or different things come in, start more expensive and, and kind of latitude to the president to make those bids, but I still think those numbers work, you know, and I think it's just in good conscious that we are aware of anything in those, in that realm, so.
I've never seen something come through that didn't fit in this. I didn't, I've never seen anything snuck through.
Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, and I think, I don't think we need to work, worry about number changes or anything like that. You know, that, that, that's kind of the nice thing about, again, policy governance is, you know, maybe we get a new president in and we need to mold or we need to keep a closer eye or whatever the case may be, we can change those around and without necessarily limiting or, or giving it more reigns. So, but I think they fit well. Okay, okay. And then we're due A two compensation of benefits. Is it both of them or just the one? It's both, right? Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's four of them. So first one, the president shall not change his or own compensation benefits. And of course, we, we just started a discussion of that and I think we're all very familiar and, and engaged with the contract and, and, you know, that's pretty straightforward. We can talk more if anybody wants to, and I'll go on to the other ones. Number two, the president shall not promise or imply permanent guaranteed employment. Again, there's policies in the government's handbook and through the negotiated agreement. That's kind of, again, language that's pretty straightforward. Number three, the president shall not establish compensation and benefits which A deviate significantly from the geographic area or market of the skills employed and B create obligations over a long term, then reserves can safely project it in no other, in no event longer than one year and in all events subject to loss of revenue. I think Ryan has showed a, a great example of even him himself, you know, making sure that financially and fiscally we've been very astute to, to the changes and, and not putting the, the college at undue risk. Of course, that's straightforward there. Then the number four is the president shall not create an unemployment contract as defined herein without legal counsel review and board approval. And I think this was kind of one of those things that we really hit hard in the last year or so. And I know just speaking with Randy, making sure that anything comes through, but it has, nothing has. So anyone have any questions about any of those, further explanation?
Is it Ryan the only one that's on, the president the only one that's on the contract? We have any other contracts with?
There's, yeah. Yeah. Adjectives are, are there? Yes, are they have to sign a contract?
Well, I mean, they have an informed contract that's presented for payment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor, do you do all of those?
Vice President, Vice Presidents.
That's through the negotiated agreement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, through the negotiated agreement. And Randy sits in on that every year.
He's made the bill shooter.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions to the number one through four?
As presented.
Yeah, okay. Consensus agreement, okay. And then the item B, the review of monitoring force treatments, people one through four, and that is in the policy governance on page ten. Marilyn, do you want to?
Yeah, so one through four starts with a preamble that says, that is Carver language. With respect to treatment of students, employees, volunteers in the community, dealings shall not be inhumane, unfair, or undignified. And those are, as I mentioned, Carver words in thinking about whether or not you want to revise those, that would be some of the adjectives that you, that are up to interpretation. So moving on, thinking about that, the president shall not operate without procedures which clarify students and staff rules, provide for effective handling of grievances and complaints, and protect against wrongful conditions. So that number one has to deal with students and staff, and it talks about the, the grievance process. Number two says that president shall not discriminate against anyone for expressing opinion. And then he goes on further to discuss that if there's a concern about the president himself, there was a, a policy on how to address that. Number three says president shall not unfold a complaint, grievance, or appeal procedure from faculty, staff, or students. And then lastly, number four, the president shall not fail to acquaint students and staff with the rights and responsibilities. So my comment in regards to all four of these is that I think the community colleges have done a great job in establishing policies and procedures that reflect the treatment of people, especially staff and students, faculty. My thought was that it may need to be beefed up a little bit in regards to treatment of community, community people. There's not a, a clear.
Line.
Line of, of if I want to talk to somebody, who do I talk to? Or if I have a complaint?
Right.
Where do I go and how do I file it?
Yeah, and, and, and I, I kind of agree, you know, we get a lot of people, I mean, drew chatter or whatnot and, you know, sometimes they're like, well, who do I talk to, you know? And, and we try, you know, as, I certainly as a trustee, you try to direct them to, hey, this person or this person, but having something maybe a little bit more standardized set in place that's easy to reference and, and as a general tool. I, I agree. I, I think, you know, we value, you know, constructive community input and, and things of that nature and certainly value all of our owners. But again, much like with students, faculty, staff, there has to be some kind of process and procedure to go in place and it's just not a, you know, and, and, and I can see the frustration by some community that feel like, well, where do we go? And, and it's confusing and, and maybe you go somewhere and you don't get an answer and you don't know. And so I, I, I think it's a good idea. I think it checks and balances there. So I, I, you know, language, I don't know. It's hard to, I mean, we can certainly.
I, I thought about, I mean, we have our, I think right now we say, if you have a concern, you can talk to the president or you can email us as, and our web, our email addresses are on the website. So, but I, I think we need to just make it clear that the community has the, that's right or has the opportunities to say something.
Yeah.
What do you think, Ryan?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I think it, you know, responding to this last month, we've had some conversations even over the course of the last month in the industry. I think one of the things is, is we have, we have very clear and defined processes and policies in place for students, employees. You know, we, we have a web form now that's available for grievances as well as incident reporting forms. But I think the one thing that, that probably stands out that we do need to be a little bit better and creating some kind of form similar to what we have in place for students and employees that would be prominently displayed, you know, maybe on the board trustees page. And what it is, is really just a tracking form that says, you know, complaints, grievances. They list what their concerns are, but then it, it is automated and directed to whoever we want at the college here. I mean, right now we have it, student concerns are directed to Vice President for Student Services, employees are directed to HR, you know, so we can direct this. But I think, as we've talked about it, and I've kind of had some time to think about it, I think that would definitely help, you know, on the transparency and communication piece, I think setting that, that form prominently displayed would help on that end.
I think if we could have a form too, and, and, and kind of the, I mean, going back to, you know, well, if it's with the president, you know, if we could, I, I don't know if there's a way, like you said, you to direct it. I, I, I feel like there are definitely board issues and then there's definitely, you know, the dealings with the college, that's yours. And, and, you know, if we do have that or have something for community, you know, whether it's a dropdown says, is this something that, is it, is it directly related to A, the president? If it is, obviously that's a board, that's a board directed, it needs to go to the board and only the board at the time. But if it's not, it really needs to be directed to you. Now, follow-ups or something like that, if that's not being addressed by you, you know, some way of kicking it to us or something like that. But I think that, again, because we don't want, not that we don't as a board need to be aware of those things, but like I said, you run the day-to-day operations and, and we can't be, you know, the day-to-day stuff, the board just is not, not really supposed to be in, in dealings with that.
I mean, is it like that, the humanity, that we'd have a huge response to those that gets into the day-to-day stuff that would be going through this?
Well, I, I think for true transparency, have something like that. So it's the option. I don't know. I, I, I mean, I would, I don't think there would be many. Again, I, and I, I mean, you know, which I check my email regularly. I don't, I don't get much. I mean, I always encourage anybody, you know, I try to respond back and, and, and have a, you know, a, a conversation or something. I think that's a whole lot easier than, you know, some other formats, but yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, Ryan, do you think you get a lot, I mean, from community side?
No, you know, I don't know that you would see a data data increase, but I, you know, I think it's hard to, it's hard to sing about transparency and not have the mechanisms in place there for it.
Right.
And, and I think it would be, you know, it would be a way just to be able to have a trackable.
Yeah. I think it's just a matter of figuring out the best way to set it up and.
And then we, like you said, trackable data and anything more anymore is data, data, data. And, you know, when it comes down to, you know, your monitoring reports and end of year stuff, we can say, hey, we've got this track record and this is, this, we're not seeing this. I mean, that's, you know, and, and having, having those, I, I think it's still a good idea. I don't know how hard that would be to implement.
So for this procedure, would it look like a, you know, number five here to fail to acknowledge and respond accordingly to community concerns? If I'm understanding you, what you're saying is we need to wait, somebody in the community has a complaint, an issue, they want brought to the college, have a way for them to. That would be the first one. A way they can notify someone. In my mind, this board works for the community. And I think if there is a complaint that comes, it probably should go to the chairman first. The chairman's responsibility then would be to direct it wherever it's supposed to go. We're their boss, they're our boss. And I don't want to see a situation where somebody said, well, I had an issue and I sent it to the president and the board didn't know about it. I've had things prior to that I brought to the chairman. They went right straight to the president, they didn't go to the board. Chairman went to the president, the board didn't know anything about it. I think it's pretty important that if we have a complaint that comes to this board, this board, this entire, entire board knows about it.
So it comes to all the board members and then from there have the chair take the lead on deciding whether this is something that needs kicked back to the president or?
I think the chairman needs some latitude in deciding, well, of course, he needs to notify every board member.
But I mean, if we're all copied on that original email, but it, it would be the chair's responsibility to proceed with it, but we'd all be notified if what's something going on.
Probably would be going to the president because he's in charge from that point on down, but involves the athletic director. And it comes directly to the board, we need to know that. But then it becomes a responsibility of the president to take care of.
And the board to follow up and.
Yeah, well, yeah, report back that we need to know the status of what all happened on it. So when somebody says, well, I complained about this and nothing happened.
Kind of like.
I would say that it's not our job to be the personnel director and the human resource director.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kick on both sides of it, but I agree, it's.
I don't understand what you mean by personnel director.
It's not our job to make sure that someone gets reprimanded or talked to or.
Well, if it's something like that, that's when we.
It is our job.
This, no, it's not.
Well, if it's.
Our job is taking care of.
Let's say it's, it's something about the. Let's say it's, it's something about the president directly. Okay, that's, that's us and us only.
And that's an easy, that's the easy one.
But yeah, if it is something that student services needs to get involved in or whatever, we can go. We've directed this to the proper people to handle this. But I mean, I don't, it, it's got to come to us at some point for us to ensure that, that, that it's getting heard and it's not getting lost somewhere. And I don't think, i- i- it's going to mean stuff that we wouldn't directly resolve. It, we're going to see some of that, that, so our responsibility then is to see that that community member who doesn't necessarily know who to go to and how to resolve it, that we can get them in contact with the right person and make sure that communication happens. I think on those things, that is our responsibility, even if it's not our, you know, like you said, some of these things are out of our purview. It is our responsibility to make sure the community knows who they need to get in contact with and that is our responsibility.
And I think a great example, I don't, I, I got a, we got a, or I got an email. I, I don't know if the rest of the board got an email, but then I emailed everyone about a student complaint. Didn't know where to turn, which was fine. Got in touch with the student or figured out what it was and, and immediately, you know, I, I talked to, sent it out to you guys where that I was taking control of it. I talked to Ryan and we got to the right person. I, I think, I look at it as a very simple and I think we're already doing it, but having something more of a trackable record. If it's, if it, even if everything comes to us as a complaint form or something through the community, if it's something directly related to a Ryan, then the board as, as a whole, we have to take control of that because that is our own employee. If it's anything else, more or less, yes, we're going to be all apprised of it, but what I'm going to do is kick it down to Ryan. Ryan's going to kick it to whoever and then, and then we can follow up with Ryan. Ryan can tell us, hey, this was taken care of or not taken care of. We're not going to go and say, oh, we need to take this to the athletic director. That's not our job. Our job is to give it to him.
Our job is to make sure the community member gets heard, whatever format, whatever department that may look like. And I, I don't.
Was saying, if it comes in, it comes to the board, the chairman needs to know it. He needs to advise us. He gives it to the president because he takes it from there.
Yeah.
We need to understand what happened.
And it's nothing for me.
Not our job to do it. It, that's what he's paid for.
And, and I mean, like you said, so you've got two options basically. Either board takes care of it or we give it to the president.
And the board takes care of it only if it involves.
It's the president.
But then that way, we always know
Exactly.
that there's a community issue that needs followed up on.
Yes.
Because we certainly don't need six different opinions going out to the community.
No.
Correct.
And that's why, that's when I emailed each of you individually, I just said, you know, hey, I, I've, I've already talked to the individual and I've already sent it on to Ryan. No need to bombard the student with, you know, different, and, and, and that just makes it easier. So.
But I don't want to be on the street and approached by something that I don't have any knowledge of.
Correct. I agree with that.
I agree too, because the public doesn't understand policy governance.
And they.
They think of the board runs college like city commission runs a city. You can go to a complaint, give a commissioner complaint about some department and he passes it on.
And, and whether or not we have a direct role in resolving whatever their issue might be, our role is definitely to be an advocate for them. And even if that's, I need to set you up with Ryan or I need to, you know, get you to the right person to solve this, they need to feel like somebody's listening because they don't, they don't get a student handbook, they don't get a, you know, employee handbook. They're just in the community and don't have so much guidance of who handles what, what department to go to. And that's where we can assist in making sure it gets to the right person to get resolved properly.
And yeah, they, they think the board has control of the college. And to me, from my past experiences, yes, we send it to Ryan. We need to be aware of it because we can use that as part of his evaluation too. On how to treat people and how's he handling taking care of policy violations or whatever. It, it's all part of his job. And we can, you know, that's something in my mind I would use as a.
Well, it's part of the monitoring report.
Monitoring, yeah.
It's a monitoring.
In, in addition to the monitoring report.
Well, and, and, and I, that's where you don't want to jive off of, the monitoring reports are his way of evaluation. But it is.
That's what it's about. So it's the public, so it's.
But when they fit into the monitoring report, all those, I mean, those all pieces tie into it. It's, it's, it's not fair that we critique him on things that aren't in this manual because this is what he goes off of. And if we're saying, oh, we're going to take people's comments and, and if we don't have something, that's not fair to him. He's not aware. I mean, I, I, I think it's, I think we're on the same token or at least on the same page. I just, I think we need to strictly adhere to the monitoring reports and, and Ryan is evaluated on the monitoring reports. And that's what, I mean, that's why he's doing it every month.
Well, I agree on that part, but at least we're getting input. It's just like the survey that he sent out about, you know, faculty and staff stuff.
Yeah.
Well, that's part of the treatment of people.
Exactly.
And we need that other deal because how do we know he's telling everything that's going on on those monitoring reports?
Right.
We need to know more information or we are going to get bombarded by the public and say, why aren't you taking care of this?
I, I'd like to clarify one thing that I think is kind of going through all the room. And number one is when somebody there are six of us. And if somebody approaches us, I think our answer to them is there is no way we're going to go take care of that. We will inform our board chair and the board will know it. It will be turned to the president. He is our employee to take care of things like that. Otherwise, if we say, oh, well, let me see what I can do about that.
Right. Not a good answer. Unless it's president directly, it's, it's about delegating.
But we would still have to go to him.
We'd still have to educate the public, but like you said, telling them that, yeah, we're going to do this.
You can say to the person asking the question, it's been referred to the chairman.
Right.
It's a personnel matter and I can't talk about it.
That's true.
And I think we're kind of getting off. I mean, I, I think it's all good dialogue. I think we're getting off from a little bit of this. I think Marilyn, I, some language or something, maybe we can look at. I mean, I, I think it would have something to, to just put in there just so A, we critique, and, and this is, then when we add this, this is a monitoring report or a policy that ties Ryan to a specific, you know, area of interest that we're concerned with. So if we can just put something even, I mean, even as, you know, community members are, are given, you know, are able to, you know, direct their concerns to, you know, trustees or I, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, the, the president shall develop a.
A, a, a form for community members to express
Avenue.
Or an avenue.
Avenue, avenue of.
I think it's, it's pretty basic, like, I'm raising a concern.
I mean, could you add it to treatment of people, number three, there maybe a sentence there that says, president shall not withhold complaint grievance process for community input.
The community input doesn't have to be a problem. It can be a compliment.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like it on a separate. And I know, and I only say that is because number three then is specifically towards internal more, I mean, faculty, staff, students, whereas this is external. And I just think it, I think it works better on a separate line items.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. Why don't we sit down and see if we come up with something we'll present to you guys next month? And it will be a charge to the president to develop that.
Yeah. Okay. Everyone okay with that for purposes? I mean, it's, it's more or less a review them anyway. So Marilyn, I appreciate that you can get back to us on, maybe, I don't think it'll be too hard for them. Okay. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. Item five, other public comments. I, we have one sign up. Are we still wishing to speak? Do we know? She's up there. She's, yeah, okay. Okay, I think Jean. Do we have video or is it just a?
Good evening.
Good evening. Jean, this is Blake. I'm gonna go ahead and I'll give you five minutes as, as indicated, and I'll give you kind of a, I won't try to interrupt you too much, but I'll, I'll give you a warning at a minute and then, and then try to let you conclude anything you might have to say. Okay?
Thank you. Good evening all.
Good evening.
Hopefully you can hear me okay. Is it loud enough?
You're fine.
Thank you. Appreciate you talking about the community. Two years kind of late, but you're a new board. Consider how complaints get to the board for sure that you know are being taken care of by the president because that's one of the things that was experienced and complained of involving community members is that the board members refuse to take it up as a board. I'd encourage that. For example, you should be asking right now, are there any charges like an EEOC complaint that we as a board ought to know about? How are you going to evaluate this aspect of your president if you don't have it somehow in a process that you as a board review and question? And how are you going to make sure that nothing's been left out? So I would ask that you consider those elements when you put this together. I have another question, and again, these are questions and comments. How is the board actually advised or given, you know, information or consenting to staff and administrators salary increases? I've never heard in, in my, you know, two years of attending your meetings, how staff and admin salaries would go up or down. I'm surely aware of what happens involving the negotiated agreement. But I don't know, you vote on many, many other ones. You vote on your adjuncts each month. So I, I have a question regarding that and I'd just like to know, you know, clarify that. So my questions are simply a member of the public concerned. I, I do want to say thank you for the transparency and the work on that. I, I'm happy to hear that you want to know what's going on in the community because I think that is the solution to moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Well, we didn't get five minutes, so we're fine there. Okay. And Andrew, I, I don't know if we've finished. Mute. There we go. Maybe. I don't know. Okay, okay, okay. With that, we'll move into B, president's report. Ryan?
Yeah, several things just to, to update you on, just starting with summer enrollment. Summer enrollment is heading along, looking very strong. As of this morning, enrollment numbers to date in comparison to last year are up five percent from the same date last year. So in this, credit to a lot of the positive results, just to credit to combination of reduced tuition rates, ongoing marketing efforts, dedicated faculty and staff working on addressing enrollment. Working on fall enrollment. We have several early enrollment days and we have processes in place right now where we are working towards being able to get several of our scholarship programs, fine arts, athletics, student government, several of those scheduled with enrollment days. We also have an enrollment date here this week that we have fifty students signed up for. So fall enrollment's lagging a little bit there, but have several, you know, several good processes in place there to be able to, to address that. Just a, an update to keep you informed as far as on the CARES Act, which is the stimulus funds. You know, we have a total again of six hundred and forty-one thousand that's available for student funds. As of today, we have distributed just over five hundred and eighty-seven thousand of those dollars to seven hundred and twenty-four students. So working very vigorously and in credit to financial aid and business office on those efforts to do that. We've also dedicated some institutional funds for emergency grants that have awarded thirty-two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars to students that were not eligible for the CARES Act. We've made some institutional funds available and been able to take care of students that were not qualified underneath the CARES, CARES Act. The laptop loan initiative, we've had a new initiative that we've started there to incentivize those summer and fall enrollment. Using, again, we have six hundred and forty-one thousand that's available through the CARES Act for institutional funds. So we're using a portion of those funds to purchase two hundred and fifty laptops that will be available to students. Right now we have an application process that's out online. Students can apply for the opportunity to receive one of these laptops. We've ordered laptops which should be here the first part of July that we will give to students. You know, and again, part of the incentive there is that they priority will go to students who enrolled in summer and fall. And then we have a priority point system that we go to students who enrolled in summer or in fall. Be able to award the laptops there based upon those criteria. Just a little bit of additional information, you know, through the course of working remotely, we've had a significant amount of, of time invested by several of our employees, calling students, just checking in with students, but also being able to find out students that did not graduate. But we know that have the opportunity to return to us here in the fall semester. Students that have applied that yet have not enrolled. We've had a lot of calling initiatives there just to go out to students and find out what their intent, what their interest is. And through that, you know, we had found that that's information that it came back to us about the, the lack of Fannie County scholarships that were available. Now, we've had several students, you know, most of our scholarships, we open the process up in the fall semester. So in November, students can begin to start applying for scholarships. You know, a lot of what we have started to hear is, you know, maybe their plans of students' plans have changed, you know, where they may have been planning to attend a, a four-year and now they're looking to stay closer to home here for this next year. And many of the scholarships we have available have already been applied for and been awarded. So institutionally, we took that, that information and have reallocated thirty thousand from work-study dollars that were not utilized. We transitioned to online and not have students reutilizing work-study funding. We have reallocated thirty thousand dollars will be added to increase the number of scholarships available to Fannie County students for this next year. So just again, taking that information, trying to be responsive to a lot of what we're hearing as we're making the calls. Just wanted to provide a quick update on a, a recent grant that we did receive through the board of regions. Our nursing program received a grant for thirty-two thousand from the Kansas Nursing Grant Initiative, which will go to purchase two high-tech medication doselivery systems. Now, these are systems that have not been updated in over twenty years and so this will be able to get us medication cards that allow students to be able to actually have hands-on experience with systems that they're seeing out in the field. This grant will be matched through funds through the Irving Corley endowment funds there as well. So we will match what we receive from the board of regions through those endowment funds. I wanted to give just an update and I know we talked a little bit last, last month there about a task force that we've had ongoing here for the course of the last month. They're really just taking a look at reopening and what our policies and protocols need to look at. There's been a tremendous amount of of work that has happened over the course of this last month. Now have Plexigath Plexiglas protection screens that have been placed into all of our high-traffic office areas. So all of our student services, business office, high-traffic, traffic areas have those that have been installed there already. Working on signage for a lot of our entrances, bathrooms and just other high-traffic areas that we will be putting into place here just to educate and inform the public of what our processes and policies are as we begin to reopen. We're finishing a comprehensive reopening plan. Carla has been heading this committee. Carla has been heading this committee, working with cross-section of individuals from campus. We will have the formal plan presented to Cabinet there next, next week that we will go through and finalize, and then be able to start working towards a communication plan that will go out externally as far as what our reopening plan will look like. So we've been working in that, and then we've also had the same type of process happening for residents' halls. Colin has been heading up and planning that will be really taking a look at how it is that we bring back students into the residence halls and the processes and the protocols that we will have in place. That plan will be presented to Cabinet next week as well, so that we can begin to start having those external communications going forth, heading into, heading into the end of this month. And then we've also had a significant amount of conversation just about what, what fall semester is going to look like. I think there's a lot of questions out there in the public about, you know, hey, are you gonna be face-to-face in the fall? What's the fall semester going to look like? Just in a lot of the interactions I have, that's the question that seems to be coming up there. So we've had a significant amount of conversations, and I know Mark has actually had a lot of work that's been done by his instructional council that's comprised of the division directors and the deans. I wanted, Mark, maybe just for a few minutes there, Mark, if you can kind of give the board an update just on the framework and kind of the model that you're looking at and that you proposed as we go into this fall semester.
Sure. So I'm very happy to, one of the things that we're planning on is sort of pausing face-to-face instruction, starting at the Thanksgiving break. So anything after Thanksgiving break, there's one week of classes and then finals week. Moving that last week and finals to a remote format. And the goal there is to, to limit the amount that students all at the same time leave campus and then come back. So there's, there's that point. And then in terms of actually delivering instruction, we've always had the, the fully online, online mode, and then we've had the fully face-to-face mode. Those will still exist. The online mode won't change at all. The face-to-face mode will be limited to certain technical programs that work in large shop spaces, for example, where, where it's possible to socially distance, or when classes are, are simply small enough to socially distance inside of a classroom. And then in addition to those two modes, it's important to know that we operate under a Board of Regents seat time requirement of 750 minutes per credit hour. And so when we talk about seat time, that's, that's what we mean. The, the two modes that we're adding to are there to ensure that there is face-to-face instruction, but we can do that in a way that is appropriately distanced. And so there are two modes, both of them involve kind of dividing the classroom, the, the number of students in half, and then having a portion of those students who meet on, on ground in the classroom, and a portion of those students meet their seat time in an alternative format. So one of those formats is through live Zoom streaming. So if you divided the, the students into a group A and group B, a group A might meet on ground on Monday, and group B is meeting at the same time through live video and zooming into that classroom. The other mode involves kind of that same model, but with, with the hybrid format. And so group A may meet on ground on, on Monday. Group B would be doing a traditional online content to, to make up that seat time. So those are the, the two models that we're proposing. One of them is a live Zoom. One of them is a, a twist on a hybrid concept and adding those to the calendar or the, the line schedule for students. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about, about those models or how we'll make that work or anything at all.
Mark, I, I mean, I know it seems like that's kind of the consensus of a lot of universities and different colleges that you hear. My question is, is that of course, we, I know we're getting some laptops to students. Are we going to, are we having, so if a student doesn't have access, they can go to a computer lab and, and be able to log, log in there, or do we find that, is this gonna be, I mean, having access to Zoom for those kids that, you know, may not be able to, if they don't get the laptop, you know, that we get to be able to give an out or something? I, I mean, I'm sure there's easy fixes to it, you know, with that student being there, but are we, are we anticipating any kind of problems with that? Or like I said, computer labs will be open, or how's that gonna?
That's, that's a really good question, and there are kind of two things, maybe three things I would say. One of them is, is that laptop initiative to work, work through providing laptops to some students. The other thing I would say is that this will look different than it did in spring when we did a full kind of shutdown of campus. So there will be computer labs that are open. Students will have access to the library to do, to do things. So there's, there's those opportunities for students. And then I think the other thing we're working very hard on is, is making sure that students are aware of the type of course delivery that they go into. So each of them, the, the courses on the line schedule will indicate this is a live Zoom. You will need a webcam-enabled device, or this is a hybrid. And with a short definition of what that looks like for students. So students will have the opportunity to be fully aware of what they need going into it. Does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, it does. I just, the other, the other component to it is, is okay, so we're swapping out. And I get it. I think it's, it's a good model, you know, to keep kids out of the classroom, but are we swapping one for the computer lab, and then a bunch of kids are gonna be in the computer lab? Are we trying to try to keep that clean more, or, you know, what's the difference in having the kids in the, in the room? In the classroom versus pushing them all and crammed into the computer room? And, and that may not be, I, I know a lot of kids have laptops and things like that, and there won't be, but, you know, I could see all of a sudden, that's the problem area is the computer room. And of course, we know all the touching and everything with computers. So I, I just kind of, I just wonder if, I, I know it's a learning process and was to see how it goes, but I, I don't know if you envision those kind of issues coming up?
We've talked about some of those things. The, the computer labs themselves will, will have different caps on them and, and arranged in ways that students can use them while, while socially distanced. The other thing we're working on is through a different CARES Act fund or pot of money, purchasing webcams that students can add to devices in order to, to check out and take with their own devices. In terms of the number of students, when we, when we were doing the, kind of the social check-in on students and, and through faculty, I did hear about, about students who didn't have devices. But, but more limited than you might think, certainly more limited than I thought. And so I, I'm hopeful that with the laptop initiative, with the webcam checkout, with those types of initiatives, we will have, we'll be able to handle that, that kind of load of students moving out of the classroom. And that will just be probably, I mean, there's no way to know at this point, but that may be only half of the courses that are going at any one time. Inspectors may choose a hybrid format where students are, are, are not in or don't need to be at a computer at that time.
Okay. I know, new territory.
Yeah, I think the best test pilot that we've had is what we've just experienced this spring semester. You know, I think, you know what Mark has said, I mean, don't forget that these are learning devices as well.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of Zoom is happening.
Sure. They, they may not have computers, but almost everyone has phones.
That's right. Yeah. And it's, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of truth to what you're saying there. And that's why we're being very intentional about how does reutilizing those institutional stimulus funds are to be able to increase what's available as far as learning devices and the computers. You know, and then the other, the other group that I just want to mention, there are two breaks, been working on Athletic Action Council, just kind of taking a look at what the protocols, the policies, the processes for, for us as we transition back to campus will look like in athletics. But, you know, I do want to just commend the work that the Cabinet and the Deans and each of these committees are doing, because there's no, there's no manual in place for how to, how to navigate these waters. And there's a significant amount of work that's gone into these conversations, a lot of webinars, reading of policies and things that, that are leading us to, you know, where we need to be at here going into the fall semester, but tremendous amount of work. Commend the efforts there on each year, each year parts. Just a last few, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
What, what are the athletic plans?
Wake up, Greg.
Oh, no, I, I'm quite awake. Not a problem. As you can imagine, there's still a lot of things that are up in the air. The NJCAA is kind of driving the whole process, trying to determine what's gonna happen with fall sports moving forward. They were originally supposed to make an announcement on June 15th. They have pushed it back to June 19th at this point. So we will not have a lot of direction from the NJCAA at least that time. So we're trying to plan as if we're, we're, we're full, we'll go. What we have to do from the moment they arrive on campus through the end of their season. So it's, there's a lot to it. Things are changing a lot as we speak, but there really is no definitive answer at this point. So we're planning on being here in full, in full go in the fall, but at the end of the day, we're still kind of waiting on some answers from the NJCAA and the conference as well about when are we gonna start? Are we going to reduce games? All those things. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, just depending on how they rule. So I don't have a lot to share, other than we're doing a lot of things behind the scenes. You know, I just want to commend my staff for doing everything that, that they're doing. They're still recruiting, scheduling, doing all of those things. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's a very strange time for us in athletics. We're, we're very fortunate, you know, to be at an institution that, that does understand the value of what we do, and, because there's a lot of other institutions that, that, that aren't in these shoes. So again, thank you very much for all those sorts of things. But we should have more information down the road for you guys. But right now, I just don't have any concrete to tell you.
Greg, when you talk about fall sports, what are those, football, volleyball?
Soccer's for men and women and cross-country.
Okay. Does it involve basketball at this point in time?
Does not.
No, and again, these plans, I mean, if you're talking athletics, I mean, the plans that they're taking a look at don't just focus specifically on the athletic seasons. They're all encompassing, so they're also taking a look at how do we back into when we bring students back? We have international students there that are based upon CDC requirements. If the fall season starts August 1st, they have to quarantine for 14 days by the time they get here. We need to back into when it is and bring international students here so they're ready to start the season.
Make them battle here.
You know, and then, you know, spectators. We limit the number of spectators, so I mean, it's, it's all encompassing, you know, not just focused upon are we gonna have the season, what's the season look like? There's, there's a lot more that goes into those types of conversations too, but.
Well, I for one, like to compliment you and your whole task force on the way you're approaching this. None of us know what the future looks like. I'm feeling real confident that you folks are doing your best to see what the future's going to look like and make plans for it. It just, we just don't know, but I'm confident that you and these folks are making their best effort, and I'm confident in the answers they're coming up with.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's, like we said, uncharted waters there, but we're, we're in the water. We're rolling, and we're getting after it.
Yeah, Ryan, I was just gonna add some housing information, Res Life. And just like everybody's been saying, some of these things that we're working with, it, it's a fluid, it's a fluid document. Things are changing all the time. But we do have some tentative dates as far as moving students in, and we'll get some of those finalized in Cabinet. But, but a lot's going on behind the scenes with Christine, the Director of Res Life, making sure we have social distancing on check-ins, making sure we have social distancing in the caf when we eat, just different things like that, but only certain things that we can control. There's, there's a lot of things that when the students get here that aren't, that are uncontrollable, but we're gonna do the best we can. And, but just like Ryan was saying, you know, we have some international students that are gonna need to be quarantined. We're also looking at students coming in from highly affected areas, which, you know, Garden City, I guess you could maybe place in that, in that area too. But we're also looking at some quarantine housing that we're gonna make sure that we have, but just different things here and there, but just a quick update from the Res Life and, and trying to, and wanted to let you guys know how we're trying to make things work.
Thanks, all.
Just a few last pieces there then to, you know, we've conducted with courses last month, the initiative that we call Operation Buster Pride. So we've gone out and placed over 200-yard signs in employees' yards just in appreciation, just showcasing the commitment and dedication that they've shown as we work through this, this crisis there as well. And then finally, next to finally, Andrew, I don't know if you could pull pictures up there real quick, please? So I wanted to give just a brief update on the construction projects with athletic training, just kind of showing you some before and after. Here's some of the four pictures. Obviously, once we get back on campus there, we'll be able to take you on a tour and show you there. But construction is moving along very good there. So it's hard to tell some of the detail of the work that's going in there, but just as he's flipping through those, the project over at the East Campus, our auxiliary training facility is 95% complete. Anticipate that being completed here very soon. And then the athletic training room in the Dennis Perryman Athletic Complex, demo began back in April and is on track to be completed by November 31st. So there is significant, you can see over at the auxiliary training room, those are some pictures there, the, the nary completion over there, the showers, fixtures and everything have been placed into that facility. So you have individual showers over there now for teams, ref, officials, everybody to be able to shower after games. We did not have previously. So again, just a lot of progress. I mean, the, you know, the Dennis Perryman Athletic Training Room had not been updated since it was constructed in 2085, so this will be a great facelift and just being able to update it there for students and our programs to be able to have access to the high-quality facilities. The last, last piece that I wanted to give, just as a, as an informational piece, I wanted to just kind of have this as, as a point, you know, this information that I'm gonna share and cover with you. It was both frustrating and a little bit unnerving to share, but it's, it is important that I believe, you know, as we're talking about transparency tonight and ability to, to be upfront, that you are aware of some, some additional expenses that you've been made aware of that we are facing this next fiscal year at Garden City Community College. Due to the number of claims against Garden City Community College over these past two years, our liability provider has indicated to us that we will be moving to a high-risk policy. With the claims that are against the college, our anticipated losses are now exceeding our premium. Last year, we saw an increase of $25,000 to our premium, and our deductible remained the same at $50,000. Our insurance broker, IMA, had sent out an insurance proposal to over 50 companies to bid on our liability insurance policy this year. Out of those 50 companies, we had one that responded and submitted a proposal to us. Much of this is due to the number of claims that we've had against Garden City Community College, which have designated us into a high-risk category. For this next year, our premium will increase by 290,000 in additional expenses.
In addition. You said, I'm sorry.
You said, I'm sorry, it, the premium?
Our premium will increase roughly $290,000 over this current budget. So we will be going from a premium currently at 30,500 to a premium of 325,000. In addition, uh, we have to also account for the deductible, the budget there as well. Our deductible will be going from 50,000 this past year to 250,000. So altogether, between what I've just indicated there as far as our premiums and our deductible that we will count for, our liability insurance will be totaling close to $494,000 in additional expenses. Now, you know, I'm not, uh, I'm not one who chooses to play victim. You know, these are circumstances that we will work through and we will find solutions. Uh, so I'm not going to come here and just bear news and not have solutions that we're going to be looking at, but it's important to be clear and transparent about the impact these claims have had against the college and our budget that we face this next. With this said, our administrative team has worked vigorously in these, in these past, in the past weeks since we've received this information to be able to identify some personnel and budget reductions that will account for this additional expense. So throughout this whole pandemic, we've been very fortunate that we have not reduced or eliminated any positions. We've retained every single position. This is something that I consider to be of utmost importance as we, we talk about taking care of people. Uh, but over the course of the last three days, President's Cabinet has met and we have identified approximately 510,000 in reductions for this next fiscal year that will all come through attrition, retirement, and resignations. This administration has had the foresight that we have held off on refilling positions since the middle of May when this pandemic started. So we have currently 11 positions that are open, uh, that we have not filled, we have not advertised, and that we will forego filling in this next year in order to account for the additional expenses that we are seeing incurred from the liability insurance, um, policy this next year. So, you know, I do want to, I want to echo and say there are no current employees that are going to be impacted by what it is we're presenting, what it is we're talking about. But there is very much an impact to the services we provide.
When you cut out, so I understand that, you know, like you said, no current, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt and, uh, you, 11 positions, what's 200 employees or?
Roughly, you know, 210, 220.
200, so 200. So I, and I understand that, yes, so basically we're not hiring those 11, which comes out to be, what, 5%? 5% personnel, you know, I struck, those are, I, that's tough. I mean, you know, and, and impact, I mean, with students, definitely impact students.
Across the board. I mean, you're talking three, five positions. Three positions in student services, two in athletics, several in maintenance, custodial. Every, uh, every department, the division on campus will, will have impact and it will definitely have an impact to students.
I know, I know you kind of sent some preliminary data on that and, and I, I'm actually glad you brought it up. You know, Ryan, I, I kind of held my tongue a year ago or two years ago when we were a different board sitting there, um, and were told that, you know, the, these claims are these, and, and I get it, there's a lot of factors to it, but these claims or these lawsuits or whatever might entail from it, weren't going after the college money, weren't going after the owner's money. You know, it was the carrier's money. And I held my tongue because, you know, obviously we, we don't know what's, what would entail by it, but we all know how insurance works. And, and I mean, the truth of it is, is increased claims, the insurance carrier's gonna, they're gonna recoup their losses by deductibles and premiums. So, you know, with more, obviously more information, you know, personally, that statement of we're not taking owner's money is completely false. They are taking owner's money. They're affecting everyone in this room, everyone in administration, faculty, staff. They're affecting every student and every community member, whether they indirectly or not directly. And, and I know there's a lot of factors and I'm, again, I'm not playing victim, but they do matter. And those, that money, we're not a institution that just has bottomless pockets. And of course I'm frustrated, you know, um, I'd like to see resolve on these things. The sooner the better, um, if that's the case, but, you know, that is a, it affects everyone and it, and it'll have a ripple effect for, who knows? You know, I, I, I feel like this institution, I personally feel like this board, this institution, even rounding up everyone. We've worked really, really hard to get Garden City Community College out of, you know, out of some troubling issues and, and work to resolve, but then we still have this and, and, you know, the, that's, that's a, I mean, you know, we're talking 11 people's lives too. So, I mean, or, you know, I, I understand they're not 11 that we've hired, but it's 11 people we can't hire. So, I don't know, I, I, I'm, that's, that's disheartening, but I know it's the time that we're in and I just asked that, you know, I, sorry, I'm not done. I, the idea of when this initially started, and I know the three of you are, you know, new to the board, but it was, it was to, to make awareness and change. Now it's money. So.
I also have some personal feelings about this. You know, I understand and I applaud individuals who will stand up for what they believe in, who will pursue a passion, um, who express an opinion, who face a conflict or they face somebody that they don't feel comfortable with. But I applaud them to do that in an adult-like manner. And then go through and see that some of those changes happened that they wanted. But to pursue a suit, to me, sounds revengeful. And to recoup a monetary figure for feeling wronged results in only one winner, the attorney. The attorney is the only one that's going to win here. Martin Luther King said it best, you know, the old law of an eye for an eye just results in leaving everybody blind. Now, doing revengeful things, it's just not the way to do that. There is no sweet revenge in civil suits. All it does is leave wounds and scars that are hard to heal. And I agree, I want this to go behind us. And I think if anything we can learn from as we started today about making sure the policies and procedures are in effect so that people can express their opinions and feel safe and welcome to express those opinions so that it doesn't grow to the actions that happened two years ago. But I also expect people to communicate, to be professional, to strategize like adults and to be professional towards a successful outcome. Be respectful and be kind. And that's what I hope that we learn from all of this. But unfortunately, we'll have to pay $500,000 a year for.
How long?
How many years? Five years, 10 years?
Makes up five-year aggregate, so it follows for the next five years.
So it's a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Now, a question on some of that, Ryan. I know on the revenues and expenses, we've only used 91%. There were 91% of the year. I know by statute, some of that can't roll over. Is there still part of that that can roll over to next budget? I mean, in the past, I know that we've come up and said, oh, well, let's go get a dirt spreader or something, because we had to spend that money.
Yeah, you're, I mean, your capital outlay follows you there and have Harley, you know, leave in there too. But I think part of it there is, you know, one of the things kind of directly answering your question here, David, I mean, one of the things that the board, uh, had taken action on, you know, was very thoughtful in doing here this year was to set in respect to the taxpayers, to be able to utilize reserves this year, uh, in order to set this year's budget. Well, you know, the charge that I have there is to figure out how it is as an administration that we're going to be able to build and back those reserves. So, you know, again, when you're talking about that, I mean, you know, we've been very methodical about how we're going about things. I mean, we, we placed a hold on positions back in March. One was to be able to see where this pandemic was going to take us. Secondly, it was to see where it is we're going to be at this year, knowing that we've used reserves to build this year's budget and how it is we might be able to build those reserves back. Those reserves aren't necessarily going to be an option to go forward here as we look at what it is that we're facing here with this. So, I don't, I mean, Carl, I don't know if you have any other insight there, things that you want to provide?
Sure. Um, thank you for the opportunity. One of the things that, uh, when, in March, when COVID, um, became present, uh, present in our lives, we basically put a spending freeze, um, on non-essential items, um, because, you know, we just didn't know. Um, so that did include personnel, but it, but it also included operational items. Um, traditionally at Garden City, depending on how the year ended up and how revenues came in, we were able to take advantage and go ahead and utilize that budget authority so that, um, because basically they, we had budgeted those expenditures, our revenues came in where we expected them to. And so, um, we were able to go ahead and, um, take care of some items that were needed, maybe for the next year or, uh, some replacement items that we've just been holding on. And so, um, basically, uh, we're not doing that this year. Um, and the reason we're not doing that this year is because the monies that we don't spend will carry forward as our money in the bank as we start figuring out what all goes forward this next year. So that in that, that does impact our operating reserves. Uh, if we have less money to start with, we're going to have less reserves. Um, so it's kind of a trickle-down effect. Uh, those are, those are hard. They're hard conversations to have. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, this isn't the first time I've had to have them. Uh, if you were in education back in 2008 and 2009, um, there were some similar conversations and, um, you know, I guess, having, having experienced that, the only thing I can, um, hang on to is that we will get through it. You know, we've got good people here. We, um, we, you know, when we had conversations early on about, do we furlough employees? Do, um, you know, we're, we're trying to utilize our talents as much as we can, but when you have people that directly work on campus and they can't be on campus, you know, th- those are, you know, they're, we're paying them. And in my comment, and in I, a cabinet, and I was very supported by everyone. It's like, well, if we don't want to, you know, if, if our employees aren't, aren't important, then sure, we, we can furlough them. That's a business decision and that's, but I don't think that's who we are as an institution. We're okay. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we will survive. Any county, um, is a, is a strong county and supports the college. Um, but, you know, for the next year, the way we do business is going to be a little different. It has to be, uh, just to sustain the long term. So, um, we've had to have some conversations with employees that they just don't understand. And that's okay. They don't need to understand, you know, they're just like, well, I've always done this. Why can't I do it? Um, and, but they, you know, they're respectful and so that was more information than you asked me about, but it's, um, it's, you know, it's been tough and it's, it's hard when, um, there's so much unknown. You look at the fall numbers right now and um, it'll be better. It will be better right now. I mean, there's, our society is just in the unknown, so it's hard to, um, hard to know what to do. But, you know, we, summer was down for a while and it rebounded and we're, you know, our numbers are, as Ryan reported, but, um, you know, we're really, um, people are really, and people are always important, but I think especially in Western Kansas, your talent pool is, is, uh, narrow and, um, you know, not being a longtime resident, I can tell you that I'm glad I was provided the opportunity because I love Garden City. I mean, people are great here. There's so much to be thankful for and but not every, you know, till you get somebody here, not everybody realizes that. So, um, but, you know, we survived 100 years and we're going to survive 100 more.
So you're saying that all the funds, Fund 11, 12, and 16 can follow, go across to next years, brother?
Well, they don't, that, I just want to be clear on that. So whatever is not, so like, if you had, let me just give an example. If you had in your department budget $10,000 that you didn't spend, that doesn't automatically roll over and you have 10,000 more dollars. Because if, um, because, um, it starts, because the money that isn't spent, the cash that isn't spent starts with, um, starts the process of what dollars are available. And basically if you just, well, I didn't spend that, so I'm going to add it to my budget. Basically, you're increasing the tax burden because you're automatically increasing the budget. You're indirectly increasing the budget without increasing the revenues. So, you know, a long time ago, when I was in grad school, it was like, we had this theory, you either lose it, you either use it or lose it. Well, that's kind of true, but the institution doesn't lose it. It's, you know, budget is just the authority to spend the dollars. That doesn't mean that, you know, um, that we're going to have a, you know, a money tree in the yard. So, um, we're actually, you know, um, we're actually looking diligently at department budgets and trying to, um, continue operations with the least amount of impact, but there will be department budget cuts. And, um, because we don't have a choice. You know, or we don't know what enrollment's at going to be. We don't know where the state's going to be. And so your third leg is, what are we going to do with the county? And everybody's impacted, so.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, just to touch one more, and I, I suppose this will answer Gene's question to us, at least the EEOC. Um, obviously, not, I don't want to necessarily, I, I, I think we're aware that we have an EEOC, and if you're not familiar, it's, it's a equal rights.
Equal opportunity.
Equal opportunity, right. So if anyone didn't know the acronym, but tell me, does that, does that play into this insurance? That's separate, right?
Separate, yeah.
Okay, I just. Okay, okay. I just, and, and hopefully that'll answer Gene's question that, yes, I think the board is aware of that, that we have a case too. So obviously, we're not going to discuss it, but, but, you know.
I noticed that we wrote a check for payment on the field over there. How many payments are left on that?
Done. Goes through twenty twenty-three. Sorry, that's.
Three more, so it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that.
I think it's, I think it's a three hundred thousand dollar payment per year.
So that won't be able to, that will not be able to give us any relief for three years.
Correct.
Had an opportunity at one time to sell a property over here. Is that opportunity still available?
A quarter of that?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean,
I know.
Not with the individual.
Understand, understand. You know, I, I have some bad feelings about this myself because in my mind, a lot of this didn't happen to happen. I remember being told, let it run its course. We let it run its course and it cost us a whole lot of money in attorney fees to run its course. So much of it didn't have to happen. And this board, from this point on, needs to be very astute. And it gets in to knowing what the community and people are thinking. So we don't have these problems come up again. They can be resolved if we will meet them instead of, or it's somebody else's responsibility to take care of it. Didn't all have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the important key, you know, the takeaway there is you're not going to prevent everything. I mean, we can have the best lay plans. We can have the best lay, you know, and we've said this there with all of our, our work will be done on each of these committees on reopening. We can sit here and we can address everything we want to. We can have the most beautiful plan. We can have the most beautiful policy on complaints and grievances and things. If it's not followed and if we're not able to adapt and figure out how we can adapt, doesn't matter what your plan is. Very true that you have to be able to adapt.
So proud of Garden City Community College and we will come back. But we need to be astute.
Well, like I said, I appreciate the information. Obviously, it's going to go into consideration for budget and like Carla said, and I, I fully understand, we'll, we'll get through it. It's, we have to be creative. And, 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 you know, all that really matters is our product to students, you know, and you know, and at the day, end of the day, that's what matters most. And we have to believe that we give them every opportunity and, and, and I appreciate Carla and your whole administration too. I mean, you know, identifying speed avenues. I, I can say that, thank goodness, you don't not have all bad luck because there has been some really positive things and, and some things that have balanced out and, and, you know, that's, that's that's at least encouraging. So I'm sure, you know, if anyone who wants to have a little bit more discussion or something, that's, you know, we have a budget retreat coming up too. And, and hopefully we have a better idea of exactly what kind of moving forward would be, but.
I think it's just important to say that, and everybody's already said it once, but this is a hurdle that we will get through. And we will
Doesn't make a difference.
do the best that we can for our students.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I think the thing that goes by my mind, I mean, while this may have an impact on services, it cannot and will not have an impact on the quality that we're going to provide as we go forward. It'll have an impact on quantity. It's not going to have an impact on quality.
It's good to hear. Okay. Well, thanks for the president report. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I don't want to leave anybody out. No? Okay, the incidental information. As always, useful information, maybe not necessarily go line by line. Anybody who care to throw anything out there, anything that they've seen that they'd like clarification on or?
Yeah, wait, I didn't understand. Colin, I think this is to you on your report on the the FAFSA students applications and transactions.
Okay.
Did you have a question on that? I didn't hear the question.
Yeah, sorry. I just, the information provided on the FAFSA student applications, I, I didn't understand it. So if you could just briefly summarize what it means.
Okay, yeah. As far as the unduplicated, I mean, it's going over the numbers compared current year from last year as of, as of this time. And so when you have your FAFSA, it's going over like on four, six, and nineteen, this was supposed to be reported a month earlier from last, from our last board meeting and it didn't get in there. But it's just showing you the comparison as of the current time from this past year or this last year to our current year as, as stated in the packet there. And that's what Melinda does. She goes over all of these and making sure as far as the unduplicated, making sure that we're going over each FAFSA and following up with the students as far as making sure that these things are being taken care of and phone calls and everything are going out as far as all these FAFSA's that are being completed and turned in.
Okay.
So, so that, we're basically, if you go under there, that there's about, like where you said, about a hundred and fifty deficit. So, but that's just timing, right? I mean, that's just, that could be a number of factors. It could be COVID. It could be timing. It could be whatever.
Exactly.
Our goal is that, that, that narrows the gap and by the, by fall, it's above.
Yeah, it should be, but it's just the timing of everything. And this, this report is actually a month, month late.
I think the other thing just to keep in mind on that there as well is remember that there is a deadline that's changed from when you have personal taxes that are due. So it's not April fifteen this year as it was last year. So there's some lighting that happens there because that deadline's changed.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else, Sarah? Anything, like to add anything to on the incidental information? Okay. We'll go into a report from Finney County Economic Development.
Meeting's been over Zoom, of course, and the biggest worry is COVID. They did address the county commission this last meeting concerning the report that comes out of it was for the health department, not showing how many people have recovered. You know, we always get that fourteen hundred and so many or the second largest or but because we're having problems with businesses. As one of them spoke up, the people in Leota didn't want them, people from, service from Garden City because they don't have any cases. And I'm, I know for a fact that one of my neighbors is from Tribune and they will not let anybody from Garden City in Tribune. Because, so that was a process of, you know, hurting the economic development and recruiting. So that's about all we've discussed.
Yep, seems to be the hot topic.
I would, I would just share with you something similar. I have a patient who's a student who's attending a private college in Missouri. And she has to go there and quarantine for fourteen days because she's coming from Finney, Finney County.
Yeah, I have a patient that has a friend here. She's been here a little longer because she was furloughed from her job. And she's leaving this week, but she's going back to Maine and has to be fourteen day quarantine before she ever starts. I mean, you know, because we're designated or at least a potential of it as that. And, and it's hard when you don't know necessarily, like I said, numbers and I, there is a lot of information.
Yeah, so at least we moved to number two spot.
Right.
We're down to three.
Right.
Okay. Well, appreciated the information there. Beth, KACC.
We did meet by Zoom on Saturday.
Did you get to show the campus? Did you walk around? With a tablet or something?
When it started, they thanked, they welcomed us, of course. And then they thanked Garden City Community College for hosting. What I knew. But anyway, it was interesting on the Zoom. It was a day, I mean, this is a personal thing, but it was a day that my housekeeper comes to clean. And I thought, now how am I going to do this? I go from this room to this room, to this room. With the help of my daughter who understands Zoom because she's enrolling six hundred kids on it by it in her school. So we set up in a basement. Everything worked. But I thought it was so interesting that, as, as different, and, and sometimes the president would, would tone in and, and then they'd say, wait a minute, you're president. You can't move that. You know, it was, it was enjoyable. I would like to read you, and it's very short, the Kansas Association of Community College trustee response to the incident with the death and, and all the incidents that are going with, with the upset protests and things like that. And this is also signed by the rep, by the president. And it's very short. It says, "The Kansas Association of Community College trustees and each Kansas community college is deepens, deeply saddened by the senseless death of George Floyd and similar insensible acts of violence and discrimination that occur in America. Racism, prejudice, and bigotry have no place in our county, our country, excuse me. We must choose to move forward by taking those feelings and using them to ensure our colleges, our places where everyone, regardless of the color of their skin or their beliefs, are able to thrive. We encourage campus leadership, students, faculty, and staff to participate in discussions aimed at finding solutions for change. We strongly denounce rioting and acts of violence. To take action, we are committed to developing plans in conjunction with our students to ensure Kansas community colleges set the example for equity and inclusion and lead the way in changing systematic inequities that have existed far too long." And this is on the KACC website, and I'm sure it's on our college website as well. Just wanted to, to, to read that. I'll make this rapid because I'm not sure I understood half of it. No. But Ryan, listen too. I do have the budgets and everything they passed out and I made copies for, for the president's office. And if you have any questions at any time, they're available there. And I also have my copies. Okay, the budget for the KACC was reduced five percent because of the reduced headcount because of, of the COVID virus. College amounts remain the same, but with the flat budget was approved. Dues are going to be based on last year's headcount. Legislative update, the community colleges received seven point five million more because of Senate Bill one fifty-five. That's where the high school students are paid by the state. And so that will help us. There's tiered prices for the technical education. Non-tiered is everything that's not, non-technical. State shortfall is a probable definite. Ten percent of state fall, they believe is going to be expected. And a lot of that half or more of it is probably because of the oil and gas revenues. The governor's Spark Task Force will decide how to use the twenty-six million received. The Promise Act passed overwhelmingly. The governor vetoed it and then it was brought back and, and it again, but it passed. The community colleges are not a part of the liability protection. And there was a lot of concern about that. The governor didn't want to include us and I asked why and the, the statement was, she did not want to expand any part of the bill for the liability. So we're in hopes because the tort claims, this is one of the reasons they talked about, the tort claims have their own budget. It's not covered through state funding. It's covered by the taxpayers. And so they didn't want to have to, have to expand that. But one of the statements was made was because there was a lot of, of feeling like the community college should have been included. So we lost the battle, but we won the war, in their words, because, so we are, they're working for federal protection. Her emergency, and I'm sure, go ahead.
Liability made specifically on COVID.
Right. I'm sorry. I didn't make that clear. It's her liability.
Did end up passing. It just doesn't.
Right, it did pass.
But not, not for community college.
But not for community colleges. And it, and it was like more for small businesses and businesses and things like that. Her emergency declaration, I'm sure you all know this. She could only close the agencies one more time for fifteen days. Schools can only close with the approval of the KSBE. They're doing the contract training, making sure that the privacy of tracking names and so forth is not compromised. And the concerns are the enforcement of rules. The federal on the side, if they're going to pass that third funding stimulus, it must be, I understand, by August first. It's based on headcount, not FTE. Which, which helps is because our FTE is, you know, when, when our students went on online and so forth, a lot of them could not take sixteen, seventeen hours. So our headcount is more important to us at this point than FTE. Kbor has established a higher education council. Jim Lewis is the Western rep. Nancy Ingram is the Eastern rep. And they're supposed to be June sixteenth. There's some concern about what they can accomplish by November because of the virus and so forth. The COVID roundtable, there were two hundred and fifty thousand people reached on the KACC website for Kansas community colleges information. Next meeting is August thirtieth and thirty-first in Pratt Community College. And as I say, you want to see the budgets or anything, I, I made copies for Amy.
I think we should call Pratt and ask them to forfeit their rounds and come out here.
I mean, it was so funny when they thanked, just about, I'm sure Amy did some stuff, but what I do, I did nothing. Anyway.
Okay. Well, thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth from anyone? No, good. No SGA. Faculty Senate, we have Nicole brought up for us. There she is.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
All right. Faculty Senate hasn't met since May eighteenth and we won't meet again until fall semester start. So my report should be pretty short. Mostly what we talked about in our last meeting was we went over a couple of policies, just kind of discussed where we're going to move with those and we're waiting for information for, for some people. There was a lot of discussion about things Mark talked about, like what's our plan going to be for fall? And so he's already went into a lot of detail with that. And I would like to just thank Mark and Chuck and Phil for letting, not for letting, but for having faculty and division leaders be such a big part of that. It's a lot easier for people to do a good job of implementing instruction in the fall when we have a good setting, kind of what that's going to look like. So I feel like we did. And any questions you brought up have either been addressed or are currently being addressed there. And yeah, I mean, that's about it. We most talked about policy and about fall, but not too much going on in the summer for faculty besides working on our classes, but that's not really a Senate issue, just faculty. Questions?
Questions, short and sweet.
I just want to, real quick, Nicole's up there. Nicole is, I just want to publicly say thank you for your work. There's faculty senate president. I've done a tremendous job and also I want to congratulate Nicole as she has been, she has received the NISAD Excellence in Teaching Award this year.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. That's awesome. Yeah, well, congratulations, that's awesome. Okay, um, anything else, Ben, no? Um, ownership linkage, anyone, anyone have anything from our owners that'd like to discuss or share?
I just hear a lot of positive comments on Ryan as president. I can't identify them, but I'm, a lot of people are stopping me and saying that they think we've got the right guy there.
The, the chatter is much better.
Yeah, that's, that's a good way to be.
Very good.
I would just say, people ask me about COVID related questions and what's going to happen. Just the unknown is still out there.
But, you know, I, and, and I can kind of reciprocate to that. I know it just, having a meeting with Ryan this morning, you know, I know as, as every employee and every faculty member and staff member, you know, our job is, or their job is to always be recruiting Garden City Community College. And, and I, I think that duly goes for the board trustees and, you know, you hear, I, at least I hear, and, and like even Ryan said, you know, kids or parents are saying, yeah, we were going to get kids enrolled because we don't want to go, you know, out of state or we, we want them close by and, um, you know, that's our opportunity too, is to say, well, get enrolled because those classes are going to fill up and, you know, they want to have those right courses. So, you know, and like I said, as trustees too, I think it's a good job to just promote, you know, and, and encourage, you know, to get enrollment and things like that. It only helps us and, and, uh, but yeah, I think that's, I think there's a lot of just, that I get, I get asked probably at least once or twice a day, are you guys going to have open classes or what's the plan? And, you know, and I say, well, it's a, it is, it's just like everyone's conveyed, it's a fluid model right now. And the nice thing is, is we have Plan A, B, C, D, E, you know, and, uh, and so I think they just want some reassurance and, and, and we're good moderators to that too, so I encourage that. But, uh, we know more every day and time will tell, so. Other than that, anybody else, um, comments? Um, we have no executive session. Um, and so again, I'll just reiterate that we do have a June budget meeting coming up, um, the twenty-fifth, that's a Thursday night. What time, six?
Six.
Six. And then, um, and then our July meeting for all, everyone that's here and, and, and in the room and, and things like that, we're going to move that to the twenty-first. Um, that gives us one more week to make sure the budget is, you know, where we can improve on to and, and everything. So, um, and that's again, same time. And as for now, we probably will be still held by Zoom and, and round table here, so. Um, but with that, I will call the board meeting to German. Thanks, everyone. Stay warm, it's cold out there, man, it's like a monsoon.
Forty-nine degrees.
Hurricane.
I think the, I think the wind chill was down by forty, you know, so, I mean, I think.